How are you, sir?
I got many questions.
The December 17, 2019 meeting in the City Council, City of Springfield, Illinois, is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulginsy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCinso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer. Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. The first item on the zoning docket is number 2019-058 for the property located at 424 South 11th Street. Petitioner is Halt LLC. Present zoning classification is B2, General Business Services District, Section 155.034. Requested zoning relief, reclassification to B1, Highway Business Services District, Section 155.033. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accepted. Recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the zoning recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. In second, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes eight voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-059 for the property located at 20 Caravan Lane. Petitioner is Edward Osman. Present zoning classification is R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief, a variance of Paragraph III setbacks of Appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow an additional structure to have a 22-foot setback from the lake shoreline instead of 75 feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. The recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. In second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. The docket number passes eight voting yes and none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-060 for the property located at 1708 to 1720 Sangamon Avenue. Petitioner is Buzzcraft LLC. Present zoning classification is B1, Highway Service District, Section 155.033. Requested zoning relief and conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033(c)(7), conditional permitted uses in the B1 Highway Business Services District and 155.200 Taverns in a variance of Section 155.200a2 Taverns to allow a tavern within 100 feet from the nearest lot on which there is a residence, church, school, park, community facility, or daycare for the tenant space at 1724 Sangamon Avenue consisting of approximately 2,520 square feet. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission or Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the requested CPU with the following conditions. Number one, the proposed tavern is limited to approximately 2,520 square feet as described and shown in the petition and its exhibits at tenant space 1724 Sangamon Avenue. Number two, no outside seating. Number three, no live music. And four hours of operation shall follow the city liquor license. Also approval of the requested variance. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accepted. Recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff with one condition that the existing fence has to be maintained or replaced with a structure that would screen and is opaque to provide separation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for approval. Any discussion? Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question to Corporation Counsel. How many votes are needed?
This would be a majority.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes seven voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. The final item on our, oh, no, there's two. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-061 for the property located at 37 Linden Lane. Petitioner is David and Jennifer Barkus. Present zoning classification is R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief, variance of Paragraph III setbacks of Appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow installation of the in-ground pool to extend to approximate setback of 45 feet from the lake shoreline instead of the 75 feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation with the restriction that the pool should be designed such that all water drained from the pool, either chloride or saltwater, shall be discharged a minimum of 75 feet away from the lake.
Any other discussion? So do we, with the second on the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
It's been moved in second to accept the recommend, or the amendment to restrict the drainage from the pool to be 75 feet from the shoreline. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So the motion for the petition as submitted with the restriction of the drainage, is there a motion?
So move for the, so move.
Second. Been moved and seconded to pass the recommendation as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes as amended. Eight voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Final item on the agenda is docket number 2019-062 for the property located at 500-504-512-518-524-534 and 538 North Grand Avenue West. Petitioner is North American Land Holdings LLC. Present zoning classification is R2, Single Family and Duplex Residence District, Section 155.017 for 500-504 and 512 North Grand Avenue West. B2, General Business Services District, Section 155.034 for the west 45.75 feet. Parcel ID 14-28.0-201-0077 and Off, Office District, Section 15.020 for 518-524-534 and 538 North Grand Avenue West. Requested zoning relief, reclassification of two Off, Off District, Section 155.020 pursuant to Section 15.212 and Section 155.213, variance of Sections 15.310 through 155.315. Residents' Office District sign regulations to allow the signed regulations of the S1 District Sections 155.320 through 155.325 to be applied to the subject real estate rather than the Off, Off sign regulations. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. The recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second the motion.
Been moved in second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes nine voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. If you please note that Alderwoman Conley is present. As well as Santa Claus.
Santa Claus, how you doing?
Hey, every day's a good day here. How you doing?
Great, Santa. Now that you're here.
I've been checking out who have been naughty and nice, but, you know, I'm not going to tell you what the list is because I think everybody's nice. I've been in there sampling all those cookies in there, but nobody left me any milk.
Uh-oh.
So maybe everybody hadn't been.
Total milk.
How's everybody doing? I'm looking around the room here. We've got a couple of new faces. Couple people don't know it.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
Santa dropped something.
There with the puncher.
Oh, that's right. You can leave it. We'll get it.
All right. Well, what's new here at?
You traded quite a surf, Santa. You made everybody nervous.
Everything's going over.
You didn't mean to come in with such a bang. I'm sorry.
I don't want to, I don't want to tell too many stories about what's been going on as I flew in, but there were a little bit of snow and it's a good thing my sleigh lies over all that snow because it was a little hazardous the last couple of days. But I've been all over the place, but I'm here to wish you good cheer and a joyful new year and hopefully everybody will get along, as they say, right? That can't happen.
For the new year or for the rest of this year?
Well, let's just get through this year, right? Maybe even this council meeting. How's that?
Make your promises, Anna.
All right. Well, okay. Well, I've got just a few presents to pass out as it's been customary, you know.
Thank you, Santa. You've been good.
You've been good?
You've been good.
John, you're a new comer on this. You haven't seen Santa. I think Santa's coming to show up here. I'm doing pretty good this year.
Yes, you are.
I'm getting everything out of here.
Thank you, Santa.
Inside joke for those people that have been here, see.
Thank you, Santa.
Thank you. Good idea. Thank you.
Look, how are you?
Real well, Santa. How about yourself? Well, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Oh, thanks, Santa.
Oh, he gets the good stuff.
Merry Christmas, Santa.
How are you doing? Good.
Playing favorites, Santa.
You have something special for Corporation Counsel?
Yeah, I got something special.
Uh-oh. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How many years you been coming to council?
Longer than you.
You look kind of old, Santa.
Yeah, then. Thank you very much, Santa.
Life is good.
Santa, you're not Alderman Hanauer, are you by chance?
Well, we got some, Mark. We'll let him have it.
That's good. That's right.
Wow. Santa's going to roll out this year.
Thank you, Santa.
Thank you, Santa.
Santa, how did Public Works do on the roads this week?
He's working the room.
He's working on getting on three.
He's working the room.
That's right.
Santa, can you please come to the podium and state your name?
And address.
That's right. We forgot that from Aldi.
Wow.
Thank you, Santa.
Thank you, Santa.
He's a doozy.
The Chair will recognize Treasure Busher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The Corporate Fund in the month of November had a beginning balance of $12,932,628. We took in total receipts of $9,285,450. The Corporate Fund had a total disbursement of $10,59,402, which left the month of November with an ending balance of $12,158,676. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Is there, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So move.
Second. In second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the December 3, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
So move.
Second. Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading, first reading of ordinances to the record of this City Council meeting.
So move.
Second. Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor. Do I need to add this now? No, I think.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading in the Consent Agenda and at the record of this City Council meeting.
So move.
Second. Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to remove Agenda Number 2019-500 from the Consent Agenda and place it on the Debate Agenda.
So move.
Second. Been moved in second. Any discussion? This relates to surplus materials with regards to a fire truck. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Oh, I guess we'll have to vote on that, right?
Just for a motion to take it off the consent is fine.
Chair will entertain a motion to place the Consent Agenda on final passage.
So move.
It's been moved in second to place the Consent Agenda on final passage with the exception of Agenda Number 2019-500. Moved in second. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mayor.
Yes, Solomon McMinimum.
There's a, there's an ordinance, 2019-515, having to do with sale of real estate. It has to do with some property that the city owns along, I believe it's Stevenson Drive. And the ordinance states that in the process of selling this property, we're going to waive certain requirements that normally pertain to the sale of surplus property. And could we have an explanation of what provisions we're waiving in the case of this sale of surplus real estate?
Yes, Board. Go ahead.
I was going to say ordinarily, we would do such things as RFPs, advertise in paper and do RFPs. However, these are commercial properties and what is probably going to work better for the city is to actually list those and market them for sale in order to get a better price. These are ones that the, it's been a long discussion through the years that are occupied with certain tenants. So it needs to go to a more traditional fashion of where it may be listed with a realtor or we may advertise it ourselves for sale. In any event, the contract has to come back to the council for approval. It's not like getting an RFP for like a vacant lot or something.
So it sounds like that we wish to promote the sale of this real estate?
Yes, sir.
And provide as much public information as possible?
It's the best opportunity to get the best price.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I've got a second item, Mr. Mayor. So on a different ordinance, this is ordinance 517, it has to do with a contract for personal services, having to do with a former employee, Dallas Whitford.
Right.
And so I have a few questions about the background to this. I understand, I know that Dallas was a manager in our budget management office. And prior to this contract, this contract is for a 12-month period beginning January 1 in year 2020. Prior to this, we had a couple of contracts that were on the management and budget report for contracts that do not exceed 25,000. I think we've seen at least one of them, which would have been for this current calendar year. So when you add up, I think that one was for 25,000. So when you add up this, that one, which was 25,000, with this one, which is an amount not to exceed 71,000, it gets to a pretty large number, 100,000. And so I'd just like to understand, a few preliminary questions first. When did, and I know Dallas has been a good employee for the city and so forth, and we respect his services. I just, a few questions. When did Dallas retire from city service? If someone could answer that? When did Dallas, roughly what month and year did Dallas retire?
It was, I think, May of 2018 or 17. I would say maybe May of 2018, I think.
So at the time that he retired, was there no continuity plan or continuation of training or crossover training prior to his departure?
We had started doing the training of trying to take his duties and divide them up amongst a few different individuals, people who were already here doing other responsibilities. But a combination of Dallas leaving sooner than he was able to transfer that knowledge, in addition with the fact that those other individuals had their regular jobs. One was a fiscal officer, our budget analyst staff, who were actually practically brand-new at the time. And in fact, I think we might have lost one between now and then. So there's just been a variety of events as to why that transfer of knowledge didn't happen. It was something that we tried to do because we didn't want to have one individual with that breadth of knowledge. Dallas was here for over 30 years and he was basically a one-man show. So he's forgotten more than most of us will ever know when it comes to especially the Revenue and Tax Division. What had happened was he left, there wasn't a full transference of knowledge, especially since a lot of it is cyclical in nature, like say, property tax comes up in the fall. And we brought him back part-time, just I think it was a few hours a week, to try and continue the training, but it just, it hasn't been enough. And that's why we decided at this point in time to bring him back up to 30 hours a week, still not full-time, still significantly less than cost than the full-time position and the benefits that go along with it, in order for him to have more time to train individuals. And also on top of that, we are going to bring on an individual to move into that slot to train with him full-time, rather than trying to parse it out to people who are doing these existing jobs. It's just too much. And that's why we're asking the council for the approval of this one-year contract so that we can do the full transference of knowledge.
Is the person that he's going to be transferring this knowledge to currently a city employee?
Yes, that is the case.
And how long has that city employee been with the city?
I don't know for sure, but longer than I have.
And that's the person that will ultimately perform the higher-level duties that Dallas was performing?
Many of them. We have another individual who's taking over the tax administration part of those responsibilities. So again, it is important to the mayor to try and have more than one individual responsible for some of this so that we don't have these situations going forward. Most of our positions, we feel like we've got other individuals who are being trained for succession purposes. There's other people, but in the Revenue and Tax, Dallas was a one-man show. That makes us somewhat unique.
Well, I would say that, first of all, when someone departs without much notice because of a health reason, a family reason, a spousal relocation reason, we can understand why a vacancy occurs and there's not time to plan for it. But I think as a general matter, we should expect some loyalty from our top-level managers to allow us to plan for their departure. Now, in this case, as you've pointed out, Dallas Whitford left us a year and a half ago, and now this contract will extend his services what will become two and a half years from when he left. And I'm troubled by this for a number of reasons. Dallas, when he left the city, he was making roughly $80,000. So I assume that now he's on a pension, an IMRF pension. And so then when we add his IMRF pension, and eventually he gets social security if he's 62 or above at some point, and then now he's back on contract, I'm really concerned that this sets a bad precedent for other employees, top-level employees, that will leave the city and then expect to come back on contract. And, and basically we call that double pay. And this is double pay that extends for a lengthy period of time. So I don't feel comfortable with the arrangements here. I don't, I don't see why you have to train someone for that long. You know, I, I'm someone that, you know, went to Afghanistan and basically had Jim Zirkle's job at four different military installations. I was a city attorney, basically, installation officer. We had, we called it right seat, left seat. We'd co-train together for two weeks, and we were expected to prepare for it and then jump right in and do the job. So this extended training just seems unusual to me, and that's why I'm going to be a no vote. Please, Mr. Clerk, make me a no vote. This is on consent. I'm not asking to take it off consent. I just want to be, record us a no vote on this particular ordinance.
Noted.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the Consent Agenda, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the Consent Agenda passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda Number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-276, and 2019-430 remain tabled or in committee. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-499, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Nancy J. Baer to the Oak Ridge Cemetery Board of Trustees. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2019-499 on final passage.
So move.
Second. Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Sorry, I lost my place here. Excuse me. I'm a yes move.
And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-500?
501.
Yeah, 500.
Has been pulled out. I have to look at item number six.
Oh, that's right. An ordinance, 2019-500, an ordinance declaring miscellaneous items as surplus property and authorizing disposal of said surplus items by auction, sold for scrap, donated, or recycled. Chair will entertain a motion.
We'll move. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the ordinance. As you alluded to earlier, proposed amendment number one would add a 1985 International Tanker Fire Truck to the list of surplus property.
Second the motion.
Been moved in second to amend it with regards to said fire truck. What year was that, 1980?
1985.
85. Year the Bears won the Super Bowl.
That's right.
Super Bowl Shuffle.
Yep. It's been moved. And second, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So any discussion on the ordinance as amended?
Further discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMinimum.
Alderman Conley, you asked a good question about our bicycle surplus property ordinance a few weeks ago, and you wanted to make sure that the bicycles get donated to not-for-profit organizations that are on the list, and you're interested in that list and so forth. And we do have the word donation for bicycles. Well, we've got this word donation for these vehicles. We've got about 20 vehicles. And we took that word off the ordinance maybe two cycles ago because as a council, we didn't want that discretion of donation to pass from the council to a staff person. And now the word has crept back in, so I'd like, the council took that word off of the ordinance, and now it's come back. So I'd like to make a motion that we take the word donation off, just to make it clear that we're not donating any of these. I think it's about 20 vehicles listed, police vehicles, city staff vehicles, and maybe some fire, and now we've got this fire truck on there. So will someone support a motion to delete the word donate where it appears in the ordinance? We've done this once before. This is kind of a harmless ordinance.
Second. Been moved in second to remove the word donation. And seconding, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the docket number as amended twice, once to add the fire truck and the other one to remove the word donation from the ordinance.
So move.
Second. Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended twice, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes as amended twice, nine voting yes, none voting no. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-501, an ordinance designating the amended Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-501, an ordinance designating the amended Far East Tiff redevelopment project area with the additional properties. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-501 on final passage.
Move to approve.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-503, an ordinance approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for amended Far East Development Project area, which was amended by adding additional properties. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-503 on final passage.
So move.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the agenda item passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-504, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing in respect to the tax increment redevelopment and project mending the Far East Redevelopment Project area by adding additional properties. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-504 on final passage.
So move.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-511, an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing the execution of contract UE20-10-56 line clearance services for a three-year term for the Electric Division with Wright Tree Service in an amount not to exceed six million dollars for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-511 on final passage.
So move.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-516, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the restated and amended contract for sale and purchase of coal with Arch Coal Sales Company, Inc., for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-516 on final passage.
So move.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Alderwoman Turner.
So I know it comes as no surprise that I have discussion on this item. We have, I don't, I don't see what the urgency is. We have about a year before this contract expires, and I think that, given our current fiscal condition with CWP as well as with the city as a whole, that we should be in a position to ensure that we are getting the best possible rate that we can for the purchase of this coal. I'm not saying that this isn't a good price. It may very well be, but I don't know. We don't know because we don't have anything to compare it to. So I don't see what the urgency is and why we can't go out for an RFP. Whenever, I know that whenever we talk about, we've talked about insurance coverage, we've talked about different types of coverage, and two oh one, everybody always says, we need to have an RFP, we need to have RFP, we need to make sure that we're getting the right price, and we need to make sure that that is competitive, except in this situation. This is the only situation that I've seen in my tenure here where nobody sees that, no one seems to think that it's a good idea that we know what we're paying for and how much it's going to cost us. The second thing is, is that we ask J.T. Boyd to review the Foresight offer, and so obviously, if we asked them to review it, we thought that the information that they were going to provide would be beneficial to the discussion tonight. I got an email with that information at 4:50. So I don't know about anybody else, but if I get an email about something at 4:50, I don't even have, I actually saw the email while I was on my way here. I have not had a chance to download that attachment, read it, or I have no idea what's in it. I don't know if anybody else has an idea what's in it, but I think that it's a bit foolhardy to rush into something when there's other information out there that we obviously thought we needed that no one has had a chance to read. So I, I don't see why we can't delay this, at least until we know what's in that report. And I still think that we should be ensuring, making sure that we're getting the best price for, for what we're, the merchandise that we're buying.
Mr. Mayor? John Davis can come up and talk to the letter with regards to that, and Doug, if he wants to come up to. Alderman McMinim?
I share some of the views that have just been expressed by Alderman Turner. I'd like to, first of all, to compliment City Waterline Power for going out and obtaining a consulting opinion by the top, some view this as one of the top coal industry consultants, John T. Boyd and Company, they have worldwide activity, and they gave us a letter dated December 12th, which basically affirms the appropriateness of the contract with Arch, which is El Cart Mine, which is the contract that would be extended by the ordinance that we're discussing tonight, a contract that runs out a year from now, and then if we pass this ordinance, we extend that contract by five additional years. And I'd also like to state that City Waterline Power, then furthermore, after receiving the unsolicited bid from Foresight, which operates mines in McCupin and Montgomery Counties, as Alderman Turner just stated, that City Waterline Power then went out and got a, an opinion from John T. Boyd discussing the unsolicited bid from Foresight. The problem is that we just got that opinion today, tonight at 4:00 p.m. It's a, one, let's see, it's, it's a detailed opinion. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pages in length with statistical information and so forth. And so I don't see any harm in giving us a chance to review this opinion, and if it supports the contract that we would otherwise pass tonight, then we can even give a stronger yes in three weeks when we next meet as a council. So if we rush this tonight, I would have to say I'm a no, because I'm against rushing. That's been my, you know, I think that's a bad idea for councils to rush. But if we, I think I'm going to be a for-sure yes vote in three weeks, so I just want to put that out there. We've got this on now, on a motion to pass, but Alderman Redpath, would you consider letting us just look at this so that we can show the public that we've looked, you know, we've, you know, looked at every page and we feel 100% confident that we're doing the right thing?
I feel comfortable voting for this tonight.
So, John, if you want to share the insights of the letter, just, you know, the delinquency of it.
Yeah, sure. And we apologize for the late arrival of the email. I just received it at 4:30 or 4:45, and I mailed it right away to Tim Griffin to get it in your hands as soon as possible. We did not sign this with any anticipation of giving it to you late. We got it, we sent it as soon as we had a copy of it. If you read the original one that Alderman McMinim discussed, the only difference between the one I sent today, this afternoon, and the one I sent previously, is the Foresight Offer piece, which is about a page of documentation. But, you know, just had an overview real quick. There are a few bullet points that they talk about. You know, one bullet point, at Foresight's stated cost in the low twenties per ton, the mine would be generating cash at Foresight's operating price. However, it is public knowledge that Foresight categorizes cash costs differently than other major producers, and therefore has considerable financial obligations that are above the reported mine cost. The next bullet point says, "It is Boyd's understanding that Foresight does not currently have a permitted ash disposal site where it can receive and dispose coal combustion ash from Dahlman. Since combining ash disposal services with coal supply is a major driver in any coal supply arrangement for Dahlman, Boyd questions whether Foresight's offer should be considered equivalent at this time." Now, something that we've discussed numerous times is, you know, they do not have a permit to, currently have a permit to take our ash. I know we've heard in the responses from Foresight, that I emailed last week also, that they've worked on it, they have not submitted paperwork to receive that, the permit yet, but when it comes down to it, they do not have a permit to take our ash. And the last bullet point I just wanted to point out was, although Foresight's price offering appears to provide CWP a significant opportunity to realize meaningful fuel cost savings over the next five years, the long-term longevity and viability of Foresight is questionable. Consequently, Boyd has reservations as to the prudency of entering into a supply agreement with Foresight, who, given its distressed situation, may not be capable of servicing or honoring the offered five-year agreement. Such a decision would certainly compromise the Viper Mine's ability to keep as an ongoing concern, ultimately putting the Dahlman Plant's coal supply at risk. So, I mean, that's basically what the response from today said. That's different from what you received last week when we asked them to look at the Foresight offer. In Boyd's opinion, you know, this is their opinion, and that's what they provided for us. And we did provide it as soon as we received it today. Let me just follow. And I would say, from the utilities' perspective, I mean, we had the same concerns, and I think we've shared that with you a little bit. And again, is that, you know, there is, they're not permitted to take our ash. That is a requirement. It was a requirement back when we did, you know, the new contract, when we did an RFP the last time. So that hasn't changed. They still don't have a permit, and that's a major, major issue for us. And then the next point is, you know, really, what's the risk of us entering into an agreement, you know, with, with Foresight, and then Arch disappearing, and then all of a sudden, you know, their, their financial difficulties worsen, and then somehow the agreement is not held, and then we don't have a coal supply contractor to use. So that is our concern with that. So we agree with Boyd's assessment.
Any questions? Alderman Conley?
Thank you. So one of the points in this report brings up the fact that if Dahlman were to close, that Foresight would also close, that they would no longer be able, we would not be requiring enough coal. And I'm not sure, I've, I read this pretty quickly, but I was at least on the train. Can you kind of give a little more background to that? Is that Dahlman one, two, and three, one and two? Do you know what that was referencing?
At first, it's the Viper Mine they refer to. And then the ability of the Viper Mine to operate, continue to operate, or the Arch Mine to continue to operate if there was no Dahlman units.
That means all of them.
That means all three of them.
All four.
All four closing?
Yes. Not at closing, just, just with, if they lose our contract and we were going with Foresight, then that's the consequence of them not having our mine, or our plants available to take, you know, to receive their coal.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I read that very quickly.
I understand, I understand. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That clears that up.
Any other questions for Doug or John? We did have someone sign up to speak on this. Roger Dennison?
Roger Dennison, 2528 Muirfield Road, Springfield. Appreciate the opportunity to speak again tonight. One thing I wanted to clarify, you know, when we were going through the IRP and looking at what we could do here, I mean, we did put our money where our mouth is again this time, and put our price on paper. I will say, you know, after, and our intent was to try to save Dahlman Three, or at least have the analysis redone. And I will say, last week with Doug's presentation, he said it during the presentation, and he even clarified at the end, there's no coal price that's going to keep Dahlman Three going. So now the question is, how long is Dahlman Four going to run? Okay? So got to keep that in mind here, too. You're doing a five-year deal for coal. I just heard these comments of J.T. Boyd. I do appreciate that you did a J.T. Boyd analysis. That needed to be done of Foresight's and the other, and an outside party doing it. So the thing is, like I stated last week, the question is, this is a line item budget deal, thirty-three and a half million bucks over five years. It's going to go one or two places, CWP's pocket or Arch's pocket, again, as it went last time. So the thing is, and I'm sure the decade of high coal prices is what's driven these plants to be non-competitive anyway, so you're losing three of them right now. In one scenario, as we all know, the IRP also said Dahlman Four is going. So I guess the question back, Arch should be asking, is, is there a guarantee beyond five years that Dahlman Four is going to run? Nobody can answer the question, I'm sure, but I'll guarantee the lower the coal price, the better chance it has to do. So our intent was to get in here, and listening to Doug's presentation and the things the city needed, and I do have a little knowledge of it in the past, was to help bridge the short-term capital constraints or the concerns you need to hopefully then get this period taken care of and bridge to the next longer-term period. And we offered last time to do a deal through 2035. I mean, we'll do whatever it takes. Again, I appreciate that John T. Boyd, that was one of my statements going to be tonight. I appreciate that you had John T. Boyd do the comparison with Arch's also, and look at these proposals. The thing is, Arch's mine price is 28% higher than our price, folks. We wouldn't be spending millions of dollars to reopen the Hillsborough Mine if all these things everybody's trying to throw at us, and their Arch questions, clearly conveyed Arch questions, to kick us back out and get rid of another competitive bidder that happened last time. I get it how that works, too. So I'm just telling you, take them all into account. I was hoping that you would defer the vote. Again, it's a lot of money that's out here. We do need to get the facts. I will address a couple of things that I just heard then. On the ash, as Doug knows, the last time, I didn't ever, I never got an ash sample to go get during the last reopener, folks. I just got an ash sample, went to the power plant myself and got it August 1st of this year, I think the 15th. I got the analysis back. I sent the analysis to Doug and their folks to let them know what it is. I put that package together to take to DNR to get approved. Last, I mean, the stuff that was written before said, I don't have an EPA permit. It's a DNR permit. It's not an EPA permit. I already have beneficial use ash to mine. So this would be additive to it, and I've already done this deal as far as disclaim, put the claims in here of whose ash I'm bringing to this coal mine. When we did the GMZ groundwater monitoring zone and that, when we bought the coal mine, I just still have to go back and get that done. So I have that analysis. I did not turn it in yet because I had all my other permits being renewed. I just had a permit hearing in McCupin County Thursday night, and it's open till December 23rd to get final comment, and I'm going to turn that permit in. I do not have to take ash till 2021, and just like I said last time, folks, if I bid to take your ash, and I'm stupid enough to not have a place for it, and I got to pay thirty dollars a ton to take it to a certified landfill, stupid me, because my job is to take the ash. It's part of the contract to be done, so that's on my watch to do. So that one keeps coming up, and it's a moot point. I will get that done, but there was other reasons that I didn't get it turned in. That's really it. Again, the other thing I'd ask is, you know, you sit and say on Dahlman Three and Four, and you're going to do this. Again, the question is, what's the future of Dahlman Four? And we'll do anything you ask. I just want a chance to negotiate this thing. Again, we're a competitive bidder. You got, we showed this last time when we went from forty-five bucks to, you know, thirty-five ninety. We're back here again. We didn't change our bid from last time, folks. We do have low-cost coal mines, the lowest-cost, most productive mines in Illinois, and actually in the nation, and it costs a lot of money to do it. Spent $2 billion putting them in here, and the good Lord has got good coal seams that we're in. So I'm going to finally get done before the clock stops, believe it or not. If anybody's got any questions, two seconds left, I'm done.
Any questions? I don't. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, folks. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Further discussion? Alderman McMinim?
I don't see any reason to rush tonight. As I look around the council, I think there's basically four no votes because there's Alderman Turner, myself, Alderman Henauer is not here, and I just understand that because you're Chief of Staff at Illinois Department of Natural Resources, you can't vote.
You know, Corporation Council, he's out of order, isn't he? Talking about who's voting on this? Isn't that correct?
Well, I think that Alderman should address the issue if they want to speculate on how people may or may not vote. That's a matter of a point of order for the mayor to make a ruling on. However, this is a council decision. It's a policy decision on either voting on it or delaying it, so it's totally within the purview of the council.
The point of discussion there... The point of, of discussion there, Alderman Redpath, was just to point out that I think it's good for the council to be united, and I think we're going to be more united in three weeks potentially. And if it's a, if it's a tie vote, let's just talk about it that way. That puts the, the burden on the mayor, so mayor, then you're in a position of deciding this. It's basically a $150 million-plus contract, because it's, as Mr. Dennison said, it's 33 million times five years, that's $165 million. I think that the public expects us not to rush these things. I think we've gotten some good opinions here from JT Boyd, but I haven't been able to read the letter. And I think when we vote on important ordinances, we should be, have the time to read a letter and to be able to ask intelligent questions over City of War Light and Power. So, that's why I'm obligated to be a no vote tonight.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes six voting yes, three voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-500, an ordinance declaring-
We did that earlier.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Mayor, you voted yes, is that correct? To break the tie?
Correct. Yep. I voted before the tie, for what that counts for. Chair entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2019-534, an ordinance amending Chapter 50 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended regarding net metering for the Office of Public Utilities as amended.
So, moved. Second.
But moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? Just a reminder, holiday walks is this Wednesday, and there's an event at the Alamo, actually to benefit Habitat for Humanity. It's a memorial for Wes Barr. That was one of his charities, and so all proceeds for the event from 5 to 8 goes towards Habitat for Humanity. And then also on Saturday, Farmer's Market is at Anvil and Forge. I think it runs from 8 to noon, I believe. Is there any new business come before the city council? Alderwoman Turner.
So, we are about two weeks, not about, we're actually two weeks out from the legalization of recreational cannabis in, in the state and in, and in the city. And, and I, and as I have looked at how other communities around us have been, you know, going forward with this, I think that we've done a really good job. I think we've had a smooth, smooth approach, approach to it. However, I, I was listening to a radio broadcast, I guess last, maybe last week, and there seemed to be some conflict with regard to how the city's going to respond to, you know, to various aspects of the law. So, I'm not asking for anyone to provide any specifics tonight, but I, I do, I do have that question in my mind. How are we going to move forward? How are we going to inform the public? And so, I would ask that once you and the police chief decide.
He was prepared to make a few points.
How this is going to move, but, but I do, I, I do want to have the opportunity before January 1st to have, I think that it would be in everyone's best interest to have sit-downs with the Aldermen, if not one-on-one, at least two or three together, so that we have the opportunity to understand exactly how this is going to happen, and we also have the opportunity to provide some, if not input, I would use the word perspective, because, because I think that that's important. I think that we have done a really good job moving forward with this together as a council, as, as one voice. And so, as we move into the actual implementation phase, I think that it would be in the city's best interest if we continue to move forward with one voice, and the only way that we will be able to do that is if we all have an opportunity to chime in on that, on that voice. So, so I mean, so actually, I think that we should probably just wait, and you guys decide what that is, and then we can, if we can, if we can then have those one-on-ones, and then have something to send out to the public. Because I think that if we, if anything is, is said tonight, I think that it may provide more confusion, because I, I don't know what's going to be said. I don't know what the, 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 the plan is. I don't know what the, what's, what that's going to be. However, I know that, I know that you're always open to conciliation, so if there is something that an Alderman has some, a, a, a voice on and wants to offer a different perspective, I think that it would only add to confusion if there is something that comes out tonight, and then we, then we have to walk that back. So, if we could just do that, that would be great. That's the first thing. The second thing is, there are two ordinances on first, on first reading, and I think that that's great, because, you know, we're going to be ready to go January 1st. However, I do have a question, and, and I don't need to have the information tonight, but I would really like to have it next week on 19526. There is, it seems that the, the language is, is just compliant, and it's, it's the exact same language that's in the legislation. However, there is a reference to a marijuana leaf identification fund, so, and I didn't see any additional information about that in the, in the actual ordinance. So, before, next week, if you could just give us that information on what it is, how it is, where the, where the money's going to go, all of those kinds of things, that would be great.
Yeah, Director McCarthy and Corporation Council.
Just briefly, that's, that's actually an existing fund, and it is used by the Police Department for testing and equipment. So, it actually goes through our budget process.
Never heard of it before.
I'm sorry?
No, I just said I never heard of it before.
Okay. But it, it's not a state fund, it's a-
No, I knew it was a, I knew it was a local, I knew it was a city fund, but I, I was not familiar with it, and since it was a marijuana leaf fund, I just assumed it was something new.
It, it has been in place for many years, and it's just, I believe that Chief could address this, or perhaps Bill, but my understanding is they use that either for testing and/or equipment, laboratory costs and so on.
Okay.
So, I would ask Chief to clarify the radio real quick, because there was a discrepancy of how it was portrayed, and-
I actually liked your approach better than his.
I did, too.
And so does the Chief.
So, we did come to a consensus about the structure, and then, and then if you want to just say how you're training the police, but we will, it makes sense to meet with the Aldermen first, so we won't get into the details. But those two points, I think that one point was the, was portrayed on-
On the radio, absolutely. So, basically, the day that we did this interview, the day, earlier in that day, I had been to a Illinois Associate Chiefs of Police meeting, where there was a comment and discussion about the State appellate prosecutor's office putting out a ruling on smoking in the yards, on the front porch, et cetera. And that opinion differs from what we had as the city. And so, at that point in time, when I was asked about that question, I said, well, you know, I just came from one. I'll have to get with City of Legal. We'll have to talk about this and come to how we're going to interpret what a residence is, what the exceptions are, et cetera. So, that's where I came from. It's not that I disagree with the mayor, it's the fact that I said I had new information that day, that there are different opinions, because the law is vague.
It is.
The law is, in some ways is very restrictive and well-written, in other ways it's very vague and not well-written. And communities are going to handle this differently. In consultation with Corporation Council after that, we've come to the agreement that the residence is the structure, and anything attached to the structure, such as a porch, a deck, a stoop, the stairs leading to there, that's how we're going to interpret a residence, okay? I could tell you other communities are not interpreting that way. So, our citizens need to be aware that if they travel from community to community, and they're going to partake in the use of recreational marijuana, the rules may be different depending on where they're traveling to. So, that's where we're at as far as that, and I got, I was prepared to go into a bunch of other stuff. We've prepared a, a FAQ that will be online and on, in social media. It was supposed to go out in the next day or two. We've worked with ISD on that. So, if we're going to have these meetings and these discussions, I need to have these meetings this week. So, and I'm in training on Thursday and Friday, and Thursday is actually a cannabis update training. So, I'm more than happy to stay after hours, meet after hours, if that's what we need to do. I'm willing to come in early if that's what we need to do, but those need to be done this week. So, if you have concerns, please come to me. I'll be more than happy to send you out our FAQ, so you can look at them ahead of time. Maybe that'll gear some questions for you. I'll send those out tomorrow morning, so you'll have those. Again, the law is very restrictive. People think this is going to be a free-for-all come January 1st. It is not. It is not going to be a free-for-all. I had somebody ask me at a session last week, wasn't this just like tobacco? Absolutely not. The law is very, very restrictive on where you can legally use, consume, and possess cannabis. So, educating people, as we have been trying to do on the radio, as we've been trying to do in public forums, we'll continue that process. But any questions you may have, I'll be more than happy to try to answer. If I don't have the answer, we'll try to get you the answer. We're pretty well versed on it, after the last month and a half of looking at this, and I'll just hold off on what I was going to say tonight. Any questions?
Question.
Alderman McMinim.
So, some of us haven't been paying attention to the discussion as much as others, but are you saying in Springfield, if someone's on their front porch, they can be smoking marijuana?
Yes, that's the way we are going to enforce that, is our interpretation currently. Now, if the courts come out with a court case that changes that, or if the legislators go back and revisit and clarify otherwise, then we will adjust our, our, our opinion to that, and you'll take the appropriate enforcement action. But as of right now, that's how we were planning for, to proceed effective January 1st of this year.
What about patio?
We are going to allow patio, anything attached, deck, patio steps, porch, stoops, et cetera. What we want people to remember out there is, you need to be reasonable in your actions. You also need to be considerate of your neighbors. Some of those porches are shared. I can see how my officers are going to get called out there to be the, hate to say, the cannabis referee, about, you're smoking on, I'm smoking on my half of the porch. Well, over here, I don't want you smoking on my half, because I got kids under age of 21, which is one of the things that is prohibited. You can't smoke knowingly within close proximity of kids. This bill is going to create headaches for us, and I've told my officers that we will use common sense, we will use appropriate discretion, but we will also enforce the law, you know? So, we're going to have some growing pains with it, but we'll be fine going forward. And eventually, the courts are going to have to clarify because of the fact the law is vague in certain points. That's why we have courts, that's why we have case law.
You know, I, there will be different interpretations, and you're in a difficult spot, Chief, with this. I would think, though, that there would be like a statewide organization that would be putting out some information that would be, you know, maybe more persuasive than one city at a time doing this. Now, as far as, you know, the interpretation, the interpretation of smoking on the front porch or the patio seems a bit odd with other provisions in the, in the new law, because, for example, the new law says that if you're a medicinal user, you can have up to five plants, but as I remember in the law, it says, but the plants can't be visible from outside your home. So, let's think about this. If you're growing plants, that you can't have visible to the public, but you can be visible to the public smoking dope on your front porch. To me, those are inconsistent positions, and I hope we'll review what we're, what we're saying here tonight.
I agree.
But you can sit on your front porch and drink a beer. It's the same thing. As, as Alderwoman Turner has said a million times, we have to stop stigmatizing this.
I think you're missing my point.
I'm not missing your point at all. I think you're missing my point.
So, remember what Santa said, right?
That, well, we are getting along. We just-
So, Chief, anything else you want to add?
Yes.
All I will say-
But at the same time, I will add this. I can eat a gummy ball inside my house and walk out and sit on my front porch-
Correct.
And no one knows for the better.
Well, I'm just talking about statutory interpretation.
As I stated earlier, the law is vague in certain points, and to the Alderman McMinim's point, we tried as law enforcement to get these addressed in the veto session, and we couldn't get a direct answer. So, these are the things that the legislators have created. They are aware of these issues and are concerned in law enforcement. Hopefully, they will go back in the spring session and correct some of these, or clarify. Until that time, we will do the best we can to get through this.
Well, Chief will meet with individuals before the first, or after, however you want, but preferably before the first. We will have information going out to the public next week.
I would like to have the information to the public no later than Monday or Tuesday next week, so I would like to have any meetings or concerns brought to me before the end of the week, if at all possible. I'll even meet with you on the weekend if I have to, but I want to get it done this week, so we can get that out. We owe that to our public to get that out.
You want me to address the rest of the things? Just, just briefly, the-
Then Alderwoman Turner.
I apologize, just for a second. The reason, the issue, the way the law is written, it says that it is not to be consumed in a public place, public, public viewing, but it, it expressly exempts residences. There is not a definition in the law of what constitutes a residence. When we look at our city code for zoning or building code purposes, the residence includes the porch. So, we're trying to be very literal in our view or our application, and not try to end up with different, or different understandings of what residence is. However, I would say what the, what the Chief said is correct. Eventually, a court may make a determination, but under our city code, resident, remember, we have a definition of residence for a zoning purpose, for a building code purpose, of construction, like when you have to do building plans, you submit a, you know, you have to get permits and so on. So, we are simply applying literally what, what we have available to us in our city code.
Well, again, I think that that's a, with, with all due respect, City Attorney, it's an incorrect interpretation of state statute that uses the term residence to look at city code to decide what the state statute meant by residence. That's not the way statutory interpretation is typically made. Normally, what you do is you look for what the General Assembly intended residence to mean. You look towards state statute for its uses of the term residence.
Yeah, the, the law itself is silent on that issue.
Alderwoman Turner.
I do appreciate you making yourself available, because I think that we are entering into a time in our society and in this city where we can move forward with, we can move forward with implementation of this legislation together, with one voice, and be successful, and not have a lot of the controversy that I see daily in the surrounding communities. And I, and I think that that's preferable. I have, I have made myself very familiar with the legislation, just because I know that it is going to, it is going to affect my constituency, constituencies probably much more than any other constituency in this city. So, I have taken advantage of the opportunity to educate myself very well about the law, and I have done, and I tried, have been trying to communicate that out through social media. I've been doing a daily, you know, fact about the law every day for, for the countdown. So, I think that with, if we have the opportunity to see what's going, what's going to be going out, since it's going to be something from the City of Springfield, which is, which is all of us, we should have that opportunity, and we should have that opportunity to, you know, to, to make some, to make some comments about it. So, I appreciate the fact that you're making yourself available, and, and I will do so as well. So, if you will send that out, you know, tomorrow, then anybody who wants to do that, we can take advantage of that. So, thank you.
Great. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Chief, and I just want to put this bug in your ear for future, maybe we could talk at some point, but I have had questions from constituents about duplexes and, and smoking even inside a duplex, where there may be even some sort of a, you know, I mean, smells travel. So, just, I would like to have that in your mind, and, and, and sort of get some feedback later on how you want to deal with that. You know, my concern is especially where one side of the duplex is occupied by a family with children. So, no answers tonight. I don't want to tone anyone down, but that, that has been a concern that's been raised.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say that that's very important. Rental property is very important. You've got to remember, this law allows for criminal prosecution under certain violations, civil prosecutions, and then a lot of it's going to be landlord-tenant law, and landlord-tenant issues, where the police department is going to show up, try to maintain the peace, deescalate any kind of disturbances, and then refer them to their landlords, and-
Well, I mean, and I have duplexes where they're, they're owned by the people, the owner occupied, so, and it's just, and it's, and again, I'm sure you're gonna have a lot of growing pains, and I appreciate you going to training and, and working with, with your, with, with your entire police force so that we have, you know, a reasonable rollout that protects everyone's rights.
Those are definitely concerns we need to discuss, so.
Thank you very much.
Feel free to give me a call.
Thank you.
Yep, there's specific questions like that, be sure to email them to the chief, and then we can write a response to, put them in the list. Any other new business? Do you wanna compliment Public Works on the snow removal and also the decoration downtown? Cruz did an awesome job.
I had an accident.
Uh-oh. And then people signed up to speak, Sheila Walk, about First Night and also the Mayor's Awards for the Arts.
Thank you, all council members and those behind me. My name is Sheila, I'm the Director of the Springfield Area Arts Council, and the mailing address there is 420 South 6th Street, Springfield. The City of Springfield and the Springfield Area Arts Council have announced the opening of the nomination period for the 20th Mayor's Awards for the Arts. These biennial awards recognize outstanding talent in and dedication to the arts in Sangamon and Menard Counties, the areas served by the Springfield Area Arts Council. The seven award categories include individual visual artist, individual performing or literary artist, arts organization, nonprofit, arts volunteer, arts educator, arts student, and business committed to the arts. The deadline for nominations is 5:30 PM on Monday, December 30th. Nomination forms for the Mayor's Awards for the Arts are available on both the city's and the Arts Council's websites. Nomination packets are available at the Hoagland Center for the Arts box office, the Lincoln Public Library, the Petersburg Public Library, and the Municipal Center West reception desk. Packets can also be requested from the Arts Council, and I'll leave some here tonight. There is no cost to nominate, and there is no limit to the number of nominations that may be submitted by a person. Since the first presentation of the Mayor's Awards for the Arts in 1985, 94 awards have been presented to individuals, organizations, and businesses. The award selection committee appointed by the mayor will review the nominations and select the award recipients in the designated categories. The winners will be announced at a ceremony on Monday, January 13th at 5:30 PM in the LRS Theater at the Hoagland Center for the Arts. The public is invited to that ceremony and the complimentary reception following, and I hope you will be there too. January 13th, 5:30 at the Hoagland Center for the Arts. The winners of the Mayor's Awards for the Arts will receive artwork created by commissioned Sangamon or Menard County artists traditionally, and this year's artist is Michelle Smith of Springfield. That artist also will create a piece for the city's collection and another for display in the Arts Council office at the Hoagland Center for the Arts. For more information, you can contact me at the Arts Council or Julia Frevert, the City Communications Director. I encourage you to nominate an individual or business from your ward. Again, I'll leave some packets here, you also can access it through the city's website. The reception, which will be led, the ceremonial reception, which will be led by Mayor Langfelder and the Arts Council Board of Directors President, Ryan Cannon, is at 5:30 on January 13th in the main theater at the Hoagland Center. The Arts Council is proud to partner with this administration to honor those who make this a rich and vibrant community, and I am truly grateful for the city's support. Thanks for your attention this evening, and I hope to see you on New Year's Eve at First Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Alice Rainey.
I don't know if you understand, but I was in another fire at Candlewood Apartments.
That's 'cause you're hot.
Thanks.
Just after your fire at your house?
Yes, so you, yeah, I'm still displeased.
You know what, I think it's you, Alice.
You think so? I think so too, if you really wanna know.
I think it's you.
But I have something to say. The fire department was there in liquidity split, and the police department did such a beautiful job, and the fire department did such a beautiful job. They were there, they were very courteous, they knew what to do, they didn't knock anybody down like sometimes they do, but they didn't this time. They helped my sister get down the stairs. And there was one person, I think they really, really would've loved to done that too, but they didn't. But I wanna thank the chief, both chiefs, okay? I can't omit one from the other, okay? You're both my friends. But I wanna thank you, and Chief, you keep it number one, okay? You keep our fire department number one, and you keep our police officers number one too, okay? And I was gonna say something to you, Doris, but I think we'll leave that alone. I was thinking, instead of one-third or one-half of the weed sales goes to the one place and one seed to the other place, I decided I think I should ask for 3% to go to the pension fund for the police and firemen. But I was thinking very hard not to say that, but I said it anyway.
I was just gonna say, but you said it anyway.
But I wanna wish you all a Merry Christmas and a blessed one, and keep everybody in the palm of your hand and be kind to one another, and thank you, Mr. Redpath.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Like, come.
Hi, I'm Rochelle Hartman, Director of Lincoln Library, and I just have a few updates. Our holiday hours are gonna be December 23rd, 10 to 5, will be closed the 24th and 25th. December 31st, 10 to 5, closed January 1st. A reminder that, for those of you who are traveling, we have ways for you to get books, audiobooks and ebooks on the go. Come on over, we would be happy to show you how to download those to your Kindles or your iPhones or whatever. We're having a blood drive on December 23rd from 10 to 1, so like right before the holidays. It's, we're, we're bringing the bookmobile in, so it will be parked outside the library. So come on over, I will be first in line. And in January, we will be bringing onboard Canopy, which is a streaming video service that's gonna offer really high-quality content, documentaries, world cinema, great courses, and the classics.
Great.
Yep.
That is a good point. The city has closed that Tuesday, the 24th, and of course, the 25th.
Yep.
So if you're shopping downtown on the 24th, you can park on the streets.
Hello.
And Reggie?
I do not like, my name is Reginald Willspoon. I'm here to talk about the Women's Center today. The last three weeks, I sit up there and been just going to the library, and people have been coming to me, talking to me, and then I just got fed up. Today, I sit up there, after I got out of my job, I went to the Washington Street Mission. People like, we glad to see you. And I don't like to go to Washington Mission, but this is what I'm hearing. The Women's Center, peoples, the staff, is sitting up there disrespecting the homeless community. Also, I'm hearing that it's a lot of laws is being broken in the Women's Center. I heard that staff is putting their hands on the homeless community. I'm hearing that medications has come up stolen in the Women's Center. I'm hearing phones coming up missing in the Women's Center. I'm hearing staff going in people's phones, reading their text messages, and calling the numbers on their phone to see who they talking to. Now, if we was out, if I was out there doing it, one of the homeless peoples out there doing, they would go to jail. But why is nothing being done to the staff when they break the laws? Now, Juan Herto supposed to be over it, but I'm hearing Tyrone sit up there, picked up a woman that's under 1 and slammed her on the floor. Why was he not charged with assault? This has become a problem. If we, we need to come together seriously about this, because none of y'all's aldermen in the city is going to talk to the homeless peoples, but they coming to me, talking to me, or chasing me down, putting words on the street, where is Reggie at? We need to talk to him. And they coming to me with their problems. The Women's Center supposed to be a peaceful place, a relaxed place. When I went in there, I was invited to go in there December 11th by the homeless community. I didn't wanna go. Juan took me around in there. I didn't go in there to see how the place look, I went in to see how many peoples in there. Now, what I did see, it was more women's than men's in the Women's Center. Now, this is what I was told today. People is getting ready to walk out the Women's Center and sleep on the streets, 'cause they don't wanna be in there no more. And that's a problem right now. They would rather sleep on the street and sleeping bags and quilts and freeze to death 'cause they don't wanna be in the Women's Center. Now, Juan is over this, and his staff is sitting up there disrespecting him. You got, and if you, I know how crazy it can be in there. I understand that homeless people disrespect staff, but the ideal is this, staff supposed to been trained to how to deal with homeless community mentally, physically, and spiritually. And some of them supposed to be what they call, they call themselves Christianity. Now, what we gonna do about it, Alderman? 'Cause if it was my request, I would ask that y'all sit up there and have Juan removed out of the Women's Center and place somebody in there. If we would've stood up there and found a place for the center helping housing, we would not be having this problem today. Seriously. Now, I do not like coming up here talking, I like to come up here and get knowledge about the city, to run a business, not to be coming up here talking about the homeless situation. Now, if I had to sit up there and come out my hideout spot and start picking the SOS, I will. I'm asking y'all, please, to do something about this, 'cause it's a lot of violations that's happening in the Women's Center. And Juan Herto should be fully responsible for this. And I'm asking the city council, as well as the community, to get him out of there and place somebody in there that know their job, and know how to deal with them. Or I'm gonna start placing signs and being out there at 5 o'clock and start picking it. And I'm asking y'all, please, remove Juan Herto.
Yeah, I'd ask Juan to come up and, as a reminder, we'll have to meet with Salvation Army if there's issues. If anybody has an issue, the police are supposed to be over there daily. I had a discussion with the chief earlier with regards to that, and so, Juan?
Yeah, first of all, the, the Women's Center has been open for 49 days. We haven't had any major issues. I just talked to the, the fire department, the numbers of calls are a lot less. I am there almost every night, and there is no phone or medicine missing, that's misinformation. You know, things are going really well. You know, there's a lot of things that we're doing. Last night, we have free haircut for the clients, we have bingo nights, we have movie nights, there's a lot of good things going on. You know, usually when something goes wrong, you hear about it, and this is already December 17, and we've been open since October 30. So I don't, you know, all my energy and the Salvation Army energy is into helping our clients. So to my knowledge, we haven't had any issues. Yeah, sometimes clients get out of hand and, you know, but, you know, everything is going well. I think Alderman McMiniman served the food, Alderman Gregory served the food there, so you guys were able to observe. As I mentioned to you guys, everybody's welcome there. You know, I am, Salvation Army and myself, we are taking care of the shelter, I mean, everything's going really well. And once again, you know, the employees are doing a great job, so there's no issues over there. So I will recommend you guys, like I asked you before, to stop by the center anytime you want and take a look at the operations.
Mr. Redpath?
I'm trying to look at the, I think it was Sunday night, maybe November 24, I was at the homeless, at the Women's Center with my wife, about two hours, I think, and what I saw was a lot of respect for Juan Huerta from those that were there. I think there were probably 55 there that night. I would say the ratio of men to women was probably four to one, men to women. I saw, yes, I saw homeless individuals that at times became unruly, and I can't say enough for your staff, for the patience and the, what I saw was the psychological effort and physical effort to keep things calm. I saw a lot of appreciation from those that came through the food line for the homeless and the, the Women's Center, and I'm sorry that you got personally attacked tonight because you don't deserve it. And I think we need, I think you need some compliments for, for what you're doing. I, you know, I remember when you took this on, I said, Juan, it's not gonna be easy. You're, you're gonna face stuff that, and stuff will get pinned on you that you don't deserve to be pinned on you, but you've, you've really put so much effort into this, and I hope, Mayor, that we find some third parties that can give some objective opinions.
No, I mean, I appreciate it, but, you know, when you tell the truth, you don't have to worry about what you said yesterday, so I'm 100% sure that the staff's doing a good job. There's a lot of people coming to our support, so everything is going great, so. And that's okay, I mean, the beauty of democracy that everybody have their own opinion, whether they like you or not.
Alderman Redpath?
Juan, I know that that's a tough job, and Alderman McMiniman hit it on the head that, that that's, it's a really tough job. I have had one complaint, and the one complaint I had is that Memorial Hospital sent over a mental health person, and they were told to leave by your staff. Is that, is that accurate?
It was a miscommunication, but I was corrected. I contacted Memorial, and I told them that they were welcome there anytime, and they've been back several times since then. Hasn't been any issues.
So they, so they're, they have. They did, they are coming back?
They have been there before since, since that night.
Okay.
Corrected that issue.
Thank you.
And also, we have different agencies. I was telling the mayor that last Friday, we have the 53 Renaissance, they came for blood pressures and different types of tests. Sojourn comes twice a month, so we have a lot of people coming.
Alderwoman Turner?
I, I have not been in the centers when there are clients there, but I did go in and do, and do a tour and talked to Juan about the different resources and services that are being provided, and I think that, and that's great. I mean, the, the building looks great, and there's a lot of different services and things that are there. However, I think that we can all agree that, and this is, this has nothing to do with, with Juan and, and the way that he's performing his, his responsibilities, but I think that we can all agree that things may not be the same when an alderman is present and when an alderman is not present, so I, so, you know, we just have to keep that in mind. And I also don't think that we should discount what someone comes and says and just automatically say, well, when I was there, this didn't happen, so that person is, is, is lying or incorrect. So I do think that I would encourage Reginald to have. So I do think that I would encourage Reginald to have those individuals that are having problems and concerns to have them to contact the mayor, and, and so those concerns and problems can be documented and we can address them. I mean, we're just in, you know, we just had our first big snow, so we're going to be, the warming center's going to be up and running for a long time, so I don't, I'm not trying to get into a back and forth with anybody, I'm just, I'm just saying what I'm saying, that I think that everybody has a right to have their concerns aired. So if there are people who are having issues and problems, I think it's laudable that they would reach out to someone that they know, someone who has been in a similar situation, someone that they can confide in, and then I would encourage you to have those individuals to contact the mayor so that, you know, so that we can get all those things on the record, so it's not just one person's anecdotal remarks. We have actual individuals, and we have their concerns and their problems, you know, certified, and then we can address those.
I do, I do want to say something.
R B Officer Jones, the homeless outreach officer, whoever the chief would designate with regards to that, that'd be the most immediate response, if he has an issue with regards to that, or if they're uncomfortable with some, there's plenty of people to go to with the city, you know, if it's an alderman, myself, or the police, so the options are there to make the reports.
And also, they can call the Salvation Army, because they are the ones running the shelter. Keep that in mind. I'm just a, I'm just a piece of the puzzle, helping, making sure that everything is going well. But like I said before, you know, we've been open for 47, 49 days, and this is the first time I heard something negative, so, and which is fine, you know, I think that every process needs to be improved, and, you know, I welcome any feedback, whether it's positive or negative.
I'm sorry you got ambushed, Juan.
That's okay. And then one more thing that I want to, I want to, Alderman Turner, very good point. Sunday, we had the big snow, we opened the shelter at 3 o'clock, and then Monday, we kept the shelter open until 10 o'clock in the morning for the safety of our clients. I want to clear that. Thank you.
War III, Ms. Turner, I keep telling them to come talk to y'all, they refuse to do it. Now, what I'm trying to do now is get them to talk to First Presbyterian Church, to talk to Susan, or talk to War II about it. They're like, "No, Reggie, we going to talk to you, and you take it to them." I told them, what I'm going to start doing is having them write it up, or I'm going to start asking their permission to record the conversation. I'm trying to get them up here to talk, but they refuse to do it.
The thing is, Reggie, if they don't come forward, they can't be helped, we can't help them, okay? So they got to, all right, all right, that's, they got to come forward.
I'm trying.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes, I, I do want to compliment Juan. You know, I have been over there, it's, the warming center is much more than what I did expect when I went over there and mingled with our community. So, do we have cameras in there?
We don't have any cameras there.
Probably, so, I'm just saying, I don't know if we can, if we can't put none. Is the Salvation Army, are they, are the employees? Now, I do want to say, Ms. Alderman, Conley had, you know, asked about, you know, many of the things that the staff are trained in, such as CPR and et cetera. Do we know if they're trained in CPI, crisis prevention, anything like that?
We have, well, you said CPR?
CPI.
Oh, CPI, no.
Crisis prevention. So what I'm trying to get to is, if one of our community members while in the warming center gets upset, gets agitated, gets to the point where they are physical with somebody else, how are we dealing with that situation?
If, we have a rule that anytime something gets violent, we call 911, and we have the employees stay with each other, calm, until the police come.
So at some point, there is a chance that one of those employees may have to put some hands on somebody, or do we stand back, or what are we going to?
We don't torch the clients, no. And also, speaking of training, on December 4th, we had a human trafficking training done at the shelter. We had a team, our Peoria that come in and did that, so. But here's my thing, we've been open for almost 50 days, and we have nothing but good things.
Yeah, for sure.
So usually, if you make mistakes, things come over all the time. So if something was going wrong, why 49 days later? So what, what process changed? So I'm there about 30 hours a week, out of my own time, because I care for the operation, and I want, I want this to succeed. So we are succeeding. So you have to keep in mind that every time you succeed, maybe there are also no, some people out there that don't want you to succeed. That's just part of life. But I will give you 100%, we will succeed, and, I mean, I care for the homeless.
I don't think anybody's questioning your passion, I think any operation, there's always room for improvement, so we always have to take a look, but the numbers prove themselves out. I mean, we had a peak, I think, of 70 individuals, lows in the mid-40s, things of that nature, so, you know, it's not a walk in the park, believe me. These, the individuals we're serving, we accept everybody, and so not all the shelters accept everybody. This is a need in our community, and we can talk about the Center for Health and Housing, I'm sure that's going to come up during the budget, because we're going to double our efforts with regards to financing with regards to that, and that's a concept, but that's where other professionals come into play. So we did the best we could with the situation at hand, and we're going to keep moving forward, you know, to address the homeless needs, but, you know, it is a challenging situation, nobody's, I don't think anybody's questioning your integrity, I think it's making sure that we look at processes, what's happening, and making sure it's a safe environment for everybody.
You're doing a good job, Juan.
Conley?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I had to comment for Juan Hurtel, please. Juan, I, I want you to know, I don't in any way, shape, or form doubt your integrity or your commitment, and you have one of the warmest hearts of anyone I know, and I appreciate that very much. But I think what we heard was similar to when we speak for the community that we represent, we heard Reggie speak for a community that feels comfortable going to him, and so I think we need to maybe consider that maybe part of not hearing any complaints is that maybe people weren't quite comfortable yet in doing that, and so maybe just, instead of viewing it as a criticism or a complaint, maybe just, we do need to make sure that we're looking at everything, and, and again, if Reggie can bring more information or, or give, give people other avenues of comment so that we can, we can provide the best experience, I hope you keep an open mind with that too. And again, it's not, and I want to, I want to echo the mayor, I don't, I'm, I know that you have a very good heart, and I know that this is, this is, this is a Band-Aid solution to a problem that is bigger than, than just this warming center, and it's something that the city desperately needs to find a more permanent and holistic approach to, and I appreciate you taking on a heavy lift right now.
I know, I do appreciate Reggie's concern, because he has brought concern to me for the last three years too, so this is nothing new, so I do appreciate his concerns.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, this will be the final comment. Good evening, my name is Teresa Haley, I'm president of the NAACP, and I want to say, Juan, I think you're doing a good job. I've heard a lot of positive things, but we have heard some negative things, and we do get calls on a regular basis for the NAACP. Again, people thought that we don't care about the homeless, we care about all of our residents of Springfield, those who are inside and definitely those who are outside. So the NAACP has heard some of those complaints that Reggie brought forward. People are afraid to come forward, mayor and city council members, because they're afraid of being retaliated against. They think if they complain that they're going to be put out of the shelter. I think that's something that we all need to take into consideration, and everybody is not going to say everything to everyone, they're going to talk to people that they feel comfortable with. Reggie is from that community, my alderman has been a part of that community, I've had family members a part of that community, so people are going to go and talk to people who they feel most comfortable with. Now, if I thought it was something explosive, I have your cell number and I have Juan's cell number, I know how to pick up the phone and talk to individuals. But at the same time, we are also communicating the NAACP with our homeless population to see what else we can do as a minority community, and he can tell you that the NAACP, our churches on the east side have gotten together to make sure that that warming center has everything that they need, and if they need more people who look like us, we are willing to be there as well. So thank you all for what you do and trying to keep the homeless off the streets, but if they don't want to go inside, we cannot make them go inside, and if they feel uncomfortable, once they're inside, they're more likely to end up on the streets again. Again, we believe that homelessness is an addiction, it's a mental health problem along with some other problems, and we all need to continue to work together. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Is there a motion for adjourn? Second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post, say nay. For adjourn.
Thank you. I want you to know, I love you, I was going to skip one of your four months.
Thank you.